Good evening, everybody, and welcome to another Zoom edition of the Middleborough School Committee. It's not Zoom, though. What is it, Sean? All right, so we're trying something different. This is going to allow, it's StreamYard, thank you. It's going to allow people to have the opportunity to comment in real time, and it's going to allow people to ask questions in real time. Generally, we take questions of the public that are not on our agenda in the public comment. And so you're welcome at this time to add those questions at the bottom of your screen or the side of your screen, wherever it is. I'm going to skip over an agenda piece because we're going to go to the school committee to give people time. I do wish to add that we have received two questions from people prior to tonight's start of the meeting. We think both of those questions will be explained in the COVID-19 report. So I'm going to save those questions for that time, and then we'll have that discussion then. So at this time, I'll ask if any of the school committee members have anything that they wish to bring up. I'll start with Rich Oakley. Rich, do you have anything?
Oops, sorry, I was muted. No, just thanks to the public for working with us on this, and thanks to Sean Siciliano for putting this together so we can get public comment going. It's interesting to be involved and hope to get some good comments and feedback.
Greg, do you have anything? Greg Rowe?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. They definitely appreciated everything they're doing so far. Happy Nurses Appreciation as well, definitely for all those working out in the community and those that are in our schools as well. I also want to say it's pretty awesome what the community has done for the seniors. And I had a conference call with a bunch of different teachers from different schools, and all of them were talking about how one or two things were done for the seniors, and Middleborough's done it all. And there are still things coming, and it's really cool that it's not driven by the school committee. It's not driven by the administration or teachers. It's driven by the Middleborough community, the people that are out there looking out for those class of 2020. And it's awesome. It's amazing what they've done.
That's fantastic. Thanks, Greg. Meg, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say Happy Teachers Appreciation Day was last Friday. So thank you to all of our administrators.
Great, thank you very much. Greg Stevens?
I'm also, everybody said anything that I would, so.
Okay, and then last but certainly last in these, Brian Gianmaroni.
I always do have something to say, and I got to tell you, with what is going on right now, what we are doing is, we talk about teachable moments, and we're sitting in one of the most teachable moments, I think, in my lifetime, and I hope we ever gonna see, but we see everybody. I don't want to wax philosophical, but we're seeing that how important every individual across this whole country, every job that is being done by people, people are showing up. There's no job too small, and I got to tell you, it's about time we start recognizing the true value of every single individual. And I think we're seeing that right now, and it's sad that we had to go through this to see that. But it's a teachable moment for all of us, and I just, and I'm thankful as a parent of the senior, what's going on for the seniors this year, what's going on district and even outside the district. It's just fantastic, the community as a whole, so thank you.
So I want to piggyback on a couple of things that people have said. First and foremost, I got to stop by the high school that morning when the superintendent and the principal and a group of administrators. And also, I should add, Sean Hutch, and I want to thank the two people who are with the class of 2020, who went around to everybody's home and dropped off a sign and had their own little parade to show them they were special, and that was really meaningful to me. And I'm glad that they were able to start that. They had posted on prior to about everything that... There was, there was a big surprise the next day, and they did a fantastic job, and they continued to do a fantastic job, so I want to thank everybody for that. I do want to thank, one person I really want to thank is Bob Newtons, because he's been really good since this whole process started about getting information out. I know some people have been annoyed at times with the amount of information, and maybe that he didn't have all the answers, but he's doing exactly what you're supposed to do in a, in a situation, which is provide everything that you know so people can see it and be a part of it. They can ask their questions. Bob is usually pretty quick to get back to them, so I do want to thank Bob for that and be able to add those pieces. Every, anybody else have anything else they want? Then I'm gonna move on. Sean, do we have any questions? All right, then I'm going to move on with the agenda. The next item on the agenda would be the superintendent's report. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, and those viewing from home. I want to bring you up to date on a few items, obviously, on my report. First of all is the COVID-19 item. We are currently in what's called Phase Three. All of our actions in the Middleborough Public Schools are guided from on high, from the Commissioner of Education through the Governor. And we have been asked as a school system to provide what has been called a thoughtful pathway towards enrichment and remote learning. And we feel we've done so. We've created an extended learning plan, which is designed, first of all, to care for students. And we need to continue to prioritize keeping our students fed and sheltered, if need be, and supporting their emotional needs and mental health, and attending to our most vulnerable students. Secondly, we need to create opportunities for project-based learning and enrichment, if possible. And the state has recommended that schools focus on particular items, and we have done so through our extended learning plan. And then the third one, and I think that's particularly important here as we get into Phase Three, with all the talk of increasing our standards and introducing new material, is to set realistic expectations. And I think that that is really important with regard to this Phase Three, and I believe well-understood and well-articulated by our administrators in saying that our expectations continue to be high but need to be manageable and need to, we need to understand separate realities. And we need to understand those folks at home that don't have opportunities, those folks at home that do have opportunities. I would tell you that we did conduct an extensive survey of our families, and we discovered a lot of information, not a lot of surprises, but a lot of information. And we had just about half of the folks saying, "We need more," and kids need more to do, and they need to be more involved, and they need to... And then the other 50% or thereabouts were, "It's too much. There's too much going on at home. There's not enough screens. There's not enough broadband in my house. I don't have internet service. I don't have enough computers in my house." So it's gone back and forth a great deal, and we have more information on that survey that we'll share out if the school committee needs that information. Moving on, our idea is to do more exposure than require mastery. We're not particularly, we're looking at sort of credit, no credit, and asking students to do more work, keeping students engaged. And those students that can move on, we move on, but with the understanding that, again, separate realities and realistic expectations in terms of the school. As part of this extended learning plan, very similar to our last meeting, I've invited Dr. Melanie Gates and Carolyn Lyons, J.D., to join us with regard to curriculum and with regard to special needs. They are both present, and hopefully you can see them on the screen. And I would ask Dr. Gates to first sort of talk about the process we went through with working with our administrators at each school level to articulate our plan and get that information out with the expectation that this Phase Three would begin between May 4th and May 11th, and maybe some of the slight differences in between, and welcome, Dr. Gates.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch, and school committee members and those in the audience watching. We've taken a lot of care in revising our extended learning plan in accordance with the guidance given to us from the Commissioner. We have engaged a wide variety of stakeholders in being able to refine the plan because we want to make sure that our core values as a district are represented in how we are moving forward during these really unprecedented times. We have a highly collaborative team at the administrative level, and our administrators are working diligently with their building faculty and staff to make sure that we gather all the input needed to make, you know, well-informed decisions about how we are supporting teaching and learning during this period. We have to take great care, not just for our students and our families, but also our faculty and our staff, and be cognizant of their own realities as well. The survey that the superintendent mentioned just helped reinforce for us the wide variety of perspectives that are out there, the wide variety of realities that our families are engaged with. And we want to be able to respect that, but we also want to continue to support teaching and learning as best as possible, which was why we took great caution in moving forward with the Commissioner's updated guidance, where the Commissioner asked us to explore new content through what they have identified as priority or power standards. And we've looked at this as us trying to continue to engage our learners, not for the sake of mastery of these standards, but for the sake of engaging our students so that they continue to be curious and engaged as learners. Most important for us is that our students do continue to demonstrate the behaviors of a learner. While we are exploring new content with our students, we are, you know, not expecting that mastery, but we're gathering what data we can from how our students are performing so that we can ensure that the bridge to next school year is one that's paved for success for all of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Gates. I don't know if there are any questions specifically to what you had to say, but I don't see them in the chat, so we'll move on to Carolyn Lyons, who's going to talk about things from the special education point of view. Thank you, and welcome, Carolyn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. So I want to echo a lot of what Dr. Gates was just discussing. I can tell you that in this Phase Three, what the process that we're heading into now, you know, our goals remain the same. The top priority continues to be the health, the safety, and the welfare of our entire school community. That includes students and families, teachers, and in the greater school community as well. So that continues to be the first goal. That's the message that's been sent to us by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, D E S E, and it continues to be the message we're hearing around the state. I also want to take a minute to acknowledge what a tremendous effort this is on the behalf of families. It is not lost on us in special education or in the greater administrative team that in this new model, we are relying very heavily on parent participation and family participation. And every family is different in our community. We have families that are first responders. We have families that are reporting to work day in and day out, and that makes the facilitation of education tremendously difficult. So we recognize that effort, and the plans that we've put in place have been designed to have a degree of flexibility to them. Families have to make the best decision for themselves, day in and day out, and on some days, on an hourly basis, with how they're navigating the materials that we've put forward and the plans that we've provided. We all recognize that no plan is perfect, and part of that is because every family's need is different. So in the world of special education, we've approached this from an individualized perspective. What I can tell you is the second most important message that we've received from D E S E is ongoing communication with our families. Administrators and special education teachers in particular have engaged families in a multitude of formats: email, telephone, video conference. There's been, there's been ongoing communication with all families about what their needs are at this time and how we can best assist students, and that's going to be continuing. We also developed, as I talked last time during Phase Two, the Student Learning Success Plans, yeah, Student Learning Support Plans, excuse me. SLSPs, I trip over my own acronym sometimes. And these SLSPs were designed to be a prioritization of goals and services that we'd be addressing during this period of shutdown. The IEPs are still in place. The IEPs have not gone away. The goals are still being addressed, and we are still collecting data on progress. So that's going to continue to be in place. With the new guidance, the newest guidance from D E S E comes new content and standards and the addressing of standards, and I want to touch on something that Dr. Gates talked about. It's important, I think, for our community to understand that the federal government advised the state government to address all curricular standards during this period of shutdown. The state then took that advice from our federal government and said to school districts, 300-plus across the state, "Okay, what we want you to do is actually address what we call power standards, the most important parts of the curriculum." And then Middleborough has taken a step to personalize that even further and adapt it to what our particular community needs. The message has been that we are going to be moving forward to expose students to curriculum. They are not being expected to master this curriculum. It will not be held against them. In the world of special education in particular, students will not be penalized, and I think that's really important. When we all go back to school and what we know of our way of life, we will be addressing these content standards again. So the hope and the design is that nobody will be left behind. I want to make a quick note about two important programs in our district. When the state handed down what they had in terms of expectations for the so-called power standards, that did not include guidance for our pre-K program or guidance on our postgraduate program. As many of you know, we have students that are in our programming from age three up until kindergarten in our pre-K program. And then we also have students who are 18 or older, as students remain eligible until age 22 in some cases, and we run a robust postgraduate program. In both of these programs, there are no changes because there were no power standards pushed forward by the state. Our focus at both the age-in process and the age-out process is maintaining access to services for students and fostering communication with our families. I want to just take a minute to remind our community at large that the full complement of services continues to be available. Special education teachers, related service providers, which include occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, physical therapists, counselors, are all working full-time in order to best meet the needs of students. Our behavioral department is operational. That includes our BCBA and our RBT, our Registered Behavior Technician, who address behavioral concerns for students across the district. I know there's been a lot of question about the extended school year program, and that's been a topic that's remained critical to the special education department here in Middleborough. What I can share is that the D E S E, as of last Friday, had informed us that they will not be making a decision about whether or not E S Y programs can run until the Governor makes another announcement in the middle of May. So unfortunately, we are going to have to be in a place of wait until we have further guidance from the Governor. I can assure the community that we are still making plans and drawing up contingencies for what the programs might look like. It would be premature to share them because until we really know what we're going to be able to do, they're frankly just ideas. What I can also share with the community is that I have engaged the CPAC, our parent group, at multiple points throughout the shutdown, and I anticipate having another public meeting so that families can have their questions answered, and we can have a discussion more specifically about E S Y. That meeting will be Tuesday, May 26th, at 7:00 PM, and it will be held by a video conference. Having yet used StreamYard, but I imagine that's exactly what we're going to be doing, very similar to this. So, Mr. Lynch, I think that ultimately concludes the pieces I have to offer this evening.
Thank you very much. Would any of the school committee members have any comments or questions for all three of us?
I think Meg had a question to start with, so I'll let Meg go first, if that's okay. I think you're on mute, Meg.
Sorry, I thought Sean unmuted me. You kind of touched upon it a little bit, but can you talk a little bit more about how the ancillary services are being offered and how they're being provided to special ed students?
Yes, so in the world of related service, we're still under a stay-at-home order. So there are no in-person services occurring. But related service have thought very diligently about what methodology is going to be appropriate. In some cases, there is teletherapy that is happening through the use of systems like Google Meet or Zoom. In other cases, related service providers have come up with a string of activities that are meaningful to each particular child. And then additionally, I have many related service providers that are participating in Zoom or live classroom performances with teachers and groups and are able to address the needs of our students in that larger context. Anybody who's participated in a Zoom with 15-plus children can tell you, for any child, it's very trying, but if you have a student with a disability, you might have particular needs. So our related service providers have been widely available to that. I also have related service providers reaching out directly to families through consult, telephone communication, email communication, and video conferencing. So I do want to take a minute to talk about how amazing that, what that means. I mean, none of our related service providers have really been trained in kind of doing these very hands-on therapies with students virtually. And I want to commend not just the related service staff, but I'll start with them for being just so incredibly flexible during this time of crisis. They've all very much prioritized the needs of students and jumped way out of their comfort zones to meet those needs. And I think we are hitting the nail on the head as best as we possibly can with the information that we have at this time.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. I think Rich Oakley has a question, so I'm going to turn it over to him, Strokes.
Hi, thanks for everything you guys are doing. I've been hearing in a little bit about the extraordinary efforts you guys are going to make this a valuable period of time for students. And along those lines, I wondered, can you talk a little bit about the students that might have less access to tech? You mentioned it a little bit in your remarks. What can we do as a school district, and what have we done to try to help them get to a level playing field with the students that might have more access?
Mr. Chair, I'll take that one. To answer your question, Rich, through the chair, we have been, actually, we did a survey, and we asked folks if they needed, and if they could get more specific with us and reach out to us. We've asked teachers to ask and reach out to students and report out through principals. Our tech department has been dispensing units. On a last count, I believe we're over 30, maybe 35, and sending those out to people who have voiced an interest in getting an additional unit, Chromebook, at home. All of our, all of our high school students have laptops that are issued to them via the one-on-one. And so we continue to dispense those. Ideally, we'd love to have a Chromebook in every child's hand, grades K through eight. Unfortunately, we do not have that. The question is, for some, the efforts on the part of the federal government and the state government are to try to equal the playing field, and if that means buying additional technology and they'll reimburse us, then there's certain, something we would certainly do and go to that one-on-one initiative, sort of K through 12, if we could. Like I said, we are nine through 12, but we continue to provide units, to send units out to homes. With actually, folks that come to the Free and Reduced Lunch, we let them know that if they need units, and Ellen Driscoll and the Technology Department have been responding to that. I don't know if any, if Melanie and Carolyn, you have anything to add to that?
I would just say that, like the rest of the special ed process during the shutdown, it's been very individualized. When we have discovered, either through our own advocacy or through the advocacy of families that there's been a need, we've made an effort to meet those needs. In some cases, that's meant physical packets of materials. It's meant supplies. It's meant technology. It's not specific or exclusive, rather, to technology. But I can tell you that this district has been incredibly flexible in trying to figure out exactly what the need has been and then trying to meet that need with resource. And I'm pretty confident that we've done that, that we've done that as the need has demanded. To that end, if there's need that I'm not aware of, or if you're watching out there tonight and you have a need, please don't hesitate to reach out to anybody in the administrative team, including our special ed coordinators and me personally, so that we can assist you.
That's great. Thank you. Makes me proud to hear things like that.
Yeah, well, Rich, Mr. Oakley through you, Mr. Chair, is equity is definitely an issue. And even if we, there are some students that even if we sent them units, they would not have the network capability to do that. So that's another issue in this town that we have to address, I think, for the long run, is trying to provide hotspots throughout the community. Comcast lists a number of hotspots that are available. Most of them are restaurants, and in some cases, people's homes. And the library has been a hotspot, and people have been able to use the library hotspot. But for those folks that do not have cable at home or the network at home, that can be a real issue, and we could get them as many Chromebooks as we could, but that does not help them. So that becomes sometimes a larger issue. That's a very small percentage, but it is definitely an issue in some homes.
The one question that came up from school committee members while you were talking has to do with how, what are our plans to get the technology back or end the books back at the end of the year?
That is part, to answer that, Rich, that is part of our, what would be called Phase Four, sort of our operational plan in terms of emptying lockers and emptying student desks and getting equipment back to students, athletic lockers and such, but also receiving units back. That the plan would be at the high school level, when the students pick up their cap and gowns and their diplomas, they would bring back whatever they owe the school and sort of justify with the school system exactly what they owe. And that includes a laptop, certainly, for each senior. They would then be reformatted and redistributed within the, within the school community. But that would be the plan, that before they can graduate, basically, they would need to return the laptop to us. That would be the plan at this point. There is a question, I could see Brian's further question is, do we let them keep them over the summer? That is not the plan now, but if that's the wish or if that's the desire, if that's a discussion the school committee wants to have, that is certainly something that the school system would entertain.
And my assumption is, whatever social distancing regulations are in effect, that would apply to the returns. So, for example, we're not going to have the entire high school return everything on one particular day.
Yeah, that would be probably alphabetized. Traffic, obviously, traffic would be an issue. And there's also a further question on there about books. Books would be included in that. That's the same category we'd put, the computers in would be the same books. And I would tell you that some of the advanced placement history books is worth as much as a laptop, to tell you the truth, so.
And so I'm going to go to the two questions that were received. I'll go with the first question, and I'll read it. "I'm really concerned about the kids that have IEPs. Both my husband and I work full-time. It is left to our children to access the assignments without our help or assistance. How can you, how can you be sure, as a school community, that the kids with IEPs are getting the same instruction? And also, will there be extended school services this year?" And the person finishes up with, "I also understand this is an entire new set of guidelines, and in a time we have never navigated before, we're all going through it together." So I think you touched upon it a little, Caroline, but did you want to add anything else to it?
Sure. What I want to, let me start with the E S Y question, because I, you know, I did say that I wouldn't, I don't have information tonight about specifically. Whether or not the school buildings are open, there will be an extended year program. So I have no intention of not providing service to our identified population over the summer. I'm not sure what that will look like yet, but there is, in any of the ideas, there is no idea of not providing service. So that's the, that's the first question. The question, and the previous part of the question asked about how we can be sure. And I think that's a, that's a really interesting question, and I certainly understand where it's coming from. I touched on that when I was talking earlier. The IEP process is not a guarantee. You never know, to be honest with you. If school were in session, you would have no greater degree of surety than you have right now because every student progresses on their own track. So the way the IEP process tackles that is to have incremental progress noting and regular meetings. And that individualization, that process, will absolutely be continuing and absolutely, once we open back up. So in answer to that particular family's question, you know, any concerns that you're having, I would ask you to touch base, if not with your special education contact person and your special education coordinator, so that we can have a conversation about what we should be focusing on right now. Have we honed down your child's IEP to target the most important pieces? Try to remember that when we all return, everybody's going to have been away from school for a period of time. And that's going to take, you know, effort on the part of the entire school community to meet all children where they're at. And that's going to take, you know, effort on the part of the entire school community to meet all children where they're at. But in the world of special education, we would proceed as we always have with an individual analysis, just based on your son or daughter and looking at where they were when we last saw them and where they are today. And then we would make a plan going forward, which is something that's subject to your personal consent.
And to that, Rich, I just, I just want to just say that, that you know, we feel for parents. We understand what they're going through. We understand their level of frustration. And I just think that it's important for them to note is that we'd love to be able to replicate the school experience at home, but it's simply not possible. So anything we can do to make things easier at home, we will. But our plan is to certainly account for those things as we move forward through the operational plan and through our plans for next year and the summer, obviously too, so.
And I'm going to go to the next question we had, and I'll start answering this because it pertains to the school committee. And it's from Bob Sullivan. He said, thank you for mentioning the email I sent you prior to the April ninth, twenty twenty school committee meeting. However, the April ninth school committee meeting, when you referenced my email, I had hoped you would also reference the main topic of my inquiry. What criteria the school committee will use to evaluate the success and concerns of the extended learning plan? He included his email from before and added, "The rapid transition to remote learning is a significant issue to our students and families. School committee development of criteria to measure success and concerns regarding our extended learning plan can be helpful to our school administration, teachers, students and parents. The potential of continuing remote learning in some form next year may require additional financial support. Working now with the administration and teachers to develop means to measure remote learning success will help their school committee to make financial decisions that best meet the needs of our student." I will add that I couldn't agree more. When this plan came into effect, I know the four people that you saw on that screen, which is Caroline, myself, Melanie and Brian, have consistently met with our counterparts across the state via Zoom and via remote learning. And we've continued to have these dialogues with them about what was going on and looking for Beck's practice and listening to each other in a wide range of topics. From a school committee perspective, it ranged from how do you handle superintendent evaluations? What do you do with extensions of elections? What do you do with pieces? I will say this, the criteria established came from the state. It was developed by the commissioner put it out. We took it and ran with the way it is. As far as evaluating it, we'll have to do that. We'll have to look at it. The superintendent mentioned that he already sent out a survey. We will continue to send out surveys to parents and to staff and to have discussions with them. We'll use those pieces in our evaluation. We are continuing to ask people to look at money in different ways and what the needs are. Today, Brian, I believe it was the superintendent from Fall River, had sent a lengthy letter over to the governor's office asking, for example, that the mass school building assistance fund be funded in a different way because of the extra money that it was costing us in order to, to work on projects. For example, in Middleborough, because of the, what the governor has asked us to put in place for the program, it's cost us an additional $20,000 a week. And we've established what that money is being used for and why it's being used and are constantly presenting it to the state as added increases. So the criteria has to be a member, has to be a conversation amongst the school committee, which will probably happen at our next meeting about what people would like to see. So I'll ask if any of the school committee members wish to talk about that specific point, so it was really addressed to us, if anything they wish to add. And I'll ask if any of you on the screen now want to add anything to it, Brian, specifically?
I would just add that it's our intent as a school system to certainly assess where students are at the beginning of the year. That would give us a great idea exactly where students are academically and in some cases, socially, emotionally. But I, we would do some, some benchmarking assessments and to figure out where students are. It would be unreasonable to think that a sixth grade class would, a sixth grade math class would start up exactly where a sixth grade math class has always started up with the understanding that if those fifth graders coming up left school at the end of March and may have completed S T math or done some work. But that sort of assessment piece needs to be done. And that assessment piece, that those assessment pieces will be coordinated through Dr. Gates and principals and obviously be reported back to school committee. So and that's a manner of, a manner through which we might assess exactly where we are and sort of the, how the pandemic affected our academics and our social emotional peace.
I'd just like to add, if I may, Superintendent Lynch and Mr. Young, that it's really hard during this time period to, to be precise and analytical with what data we're gathering because of the influence of so many variables that are beyond our control currently. You know, we are looking at the engagement rate with our students. We are looking at their completion of the activities. We are looking at that information, but we know that all of that data that we're collecting also has a backstory of what's going on in the homes during this time period. So as Superintendent Lynch said, diagnostic testing next year is going to be imperative. It's important to us no matter what is a school district, but it's imperative to us so that we can be sure to meet our students where they're at and promote growth for all students.
The other thing I'll add too is, as you said before, Brian, part of this conversation is making sure that the, of our student are met. So we are having conversations about devices. We're having conversations about technology. We're having broader conversations about what they have for internet capabilities and things like that. I, I think it's, it's also a bigger conversation for the community. For example, we're not going to drop hotspots into neighborhoods. That's, that has to be part of a conversation probably with the cable committee. So this is an even bigger conversation as we move forward. Do you agree, Brad?
I do agree.
I think, can I just add one thing? You know, assessment is our bread and butter in special education. We're in a constant place of assessment. We have to do that in order best meet the needs of students on an individual level. Heard Superintendent Lynch touch on it. In the world, in our world here in Middleborough, we address progress and student performance through a whole child approach. So there's a lot that goes into that assessment. Certainly academics are part of it, but we're at a place where we're assisting families with meeting basic needs and also social and emotional and mental health and wellbeing. And that will continue to be a major area of focus. Numerous studies have kind of touched on this discussion that, you know, students who have unmet social, emotional needs aren't really available for learning. And our district has mobilized to address growing and possibly increasing social and emotional learning needs. We're anticipating that for our return. So I think that's part of it. What makes this particularly tough is there are a multitude of variables that fold into that performance outside of a pandemic time, let alone right now. So all I can add is that we'll be using the whole child lens when we assess our students, when we get them back in person as we've been doing during the shutdown.
Thank you. I know Mr. Rowe had something he wanted to add, so I'll ask Sean to bump in. Greg, Greg?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sean, for bumping me in. My daughter is in second grade right now and the M C, not the M C, the M K G and other, other schools have done this great Google document to kind of guide them in what they should be doing. But now they're asking for evidence on what they're doing and stuff like that. So I don't know if that's mandated by the administration or where it came from, but the fact that they're looking into that now to kind of get a almost kind of like a snapshot of where the student now is impressive. And it's, and I can tell you, having taught to the other parents in that class, everybody's kind of all over the place. And it, there's no, until you get that data back and it's going to take time to get that data back as people accommodate to this. I think it's great that the teachers are looking out for that now, that my child's teacher does care what she is getting and what she's missing, so that can be reported to her teacher next year.
That's correct.
Yeah, exactly. And I think, I think, you know, people are very cognizant about finding and looking for ways in which to survey people and make sure that their needs are being met. And the same token, we're going to have those discussions all along. I, I do, you know, it's, I think it's everybody here is fervent hope that we can open school in September in a way that we're used to. But if we can't, we're going to plan for every alternative that we need to plan for, for what September looks like. And the Mass Association of School Committees, and I know the Mass Association of School Superintendents have had this constant dialogue since the very beginning about, okay, what could September look like? And let's work out the details of every which way it could go, whether it starts off with remote learning or starts off with split classrooms or starts off with a variety of things. Those conversations are ongoing and I, I think the biggest thing is what, what's happening now may not necessarily end up happening in the fall. Because people are looking at what's going on now and trying to find best practice over and over again to see what works. And they're really surveying all the school systems to say, okay, what do you need? What's going on? What can we do better from a state perspective? And in the few conversations I've had and the conversations I've been a part of, I really have to say the Commissioner of Education is doing an incredible job, given what we're in the middle of. And he should be commended for just his openness and his ability to have conversations over and over again. Does anyone else have any questions about this particular topic? I would thank you guys for coming in. I really appreciate your input as always, and I thank you. And to the two people who asked us questions, I hope we answered them the way you wanted. But if not, please send us more information and we will continue to make sure that your questions are answered. Even though they may not be answered at the school committee meeting, we can try to get you answers to afterwards. So if that's the case. So Superintendent Lynch, I'll turn it back over to your superintendents report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And again, I want to thank Dr. Melanie Gates and Carolyn Lyons for their considerable input with regard to the entire process. As we move on here, my, my second item here is, is school choice. And I do, they're on the agenda, it does say school choice seats and that shouldn't be on there right now, and I will explain. Tonight's vote that we're asking from the committee is, do we want to continue to be a school choice district? And the question is, the information that I'll provide for you is that we currently have forty-six students who we take in as school choice students. This brings roughly a little bit over a quarter of a million dollars to the district. It pays full salaries for at least two teachers and then some and provides money from the operational budget. So a quarter million dollars at this day and time comes in very handy for a school system. That's going to be really at bare bones budget-wise next year with a couple of, with some changes administratively, et cetera. I would just let you know that tonight's vote is to whether to continue. And I would recommend to you that we do not vote on, on seats tonight, on what open seats, and I would tell you why. Number one, we've just had kindergarten orientation. Katie Godine and Melanie Gates are working on projections and enrollment for next year, but that factors on that kindergarten class. And it also factors on the fact that both Coil Cassidy and Sacred Heart Middle High Schools have closed. And all of those students that belong or that, that live in Middleborough may be coming to Middleborough, may not be, but maybe. And right now, due to the closure, there may be some confusion as to registration and the registration piece online. So right now, we're looking at some question marks in terms of students coming in. We know we have to be watchful of the high school enrollment. We know we have a building that's being built for seven hundred and twenty students in spite of all the argument that was put in place when we first went to build the building. Obviously, that there's more room and there are more classrooms and we can convert some of, some of the dedicated spaces to classrooms. But the reality is, I recommend tonight that we, we vote on accepting school choice to keep us a school choice district so that we have options. This has to be registered by June first electronically with the state. And then we can make determinations on numbers as we get a better idea, because we don't do lotteries till the end of June anyways. And we do, we did a lottery at the end of June last year and we did a lottery at the end of August last year. That would probably be the intent again, as the school committee policy dictates. So we wouldn't need to know exact numbers right now. But we'll have a better idea once that analysis is completed through Dr. Gates and Katie Godine, and who's our student information management specialist, and get an idea on where those students from, from Sacred Heart and from Coil might end up. And if they end up in Middleborough High School, that may push us to the fact that we may not be able to take any more students in the high school. So that being said, I would leave it up to a school committee discussion and, and and your action tonight would be appreciated, just so I can then register your vote with the, with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
So with that, I'll ask Sean to bring up all the school committee members. Brian, I know you have your hand up, so I'll let you go first.
I'll start for discussion with a motion to continue being a school choice district.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Again, for the purposes of discussion, anyone have anything they wish to discuss? Mr. Oakley?
Yeah, I just wanted to note for those folks watching that at previous meetings, we've discussed the levels, the sizes of classrooms versus the number of school choice students. And although right now all we're doing is voting to remain or continue being a school choice district, I think Mr. Lynch has answered this question previously, maybe even by me, that we're nowhere near any level that would start to negatively impact other students or classrooms. And given the, the benefits to the district, I would, I would definitely be in favor of this.
No, and I would add that I would agree with that, with the exception of, as the superintendent said, he does have some concern about the kindergarten currently. I will say this, I know Greg and I watched the kindergarten orientation last night, Greg Rowe and I. I want to thank Mrs. Lintender because she did a fantastic job. I watched it primarily not because I have a kindergarten child coming, but because I wanted to see how this program worked and what people could expect from a school committee meeting. But there is a sizable number and I think the other thing we need to realize is there has to be at least a little bit of time to look at the Sacred Heart and the Coil numbers to make sure it won't interfere. And that's absolutely the thing we've always done, Rich, is to ensure that kids moving into grades didn't interfere with everybody. What it would do was create a positive piece, which is we were able to add additional dollars to the district. And those dollars translated into additional services for all kids that we wouldn't normally be able to pay for. In the high school case, it's, it's added an additional money in the science to help with the MCAS science component. That's a requirement of 10th graders. And so we've looked for bits and pieces over that period of time to make sure that it met and helped. So any other comments that people want to make? Mr. Givano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As, as I recall, when I joined this group in twenty eleven, we were, we were only a school choice district for grade twelve. We've, we've slowly and carefully and methodically introduced our school choice all the way down to the, to the kindergarten level. And I think that that has been one of the assets that we've, that we can embrace is that we did do it in a methodical level. And now that we're looking at the potential of students coming back and with respect to the, the new high school, that we may see students that may not leave for, for whatever reason, just because we have a new high school and the new programs like Project Lead the Way. On top of that, we still have building going on in our community and more and more of these apartments and, and affordable units that are, are able to be out there that families can afford, that will also bring additional students within to our district, whether born into our district or moved into our district. So I think that being a school choice district, absolutely. And then the methodical look, when we get a little closer, I know Brian's watching it and we all watch it very carefully. So I definitely, definitely want to remain a school choice district. Thank you.
I want to bring up one point too, that's really, and I know, for example, Greg's been around, Greg Rowe's been around for a while and Brian has, as far as school systems, there was an idea for a long time called senior privilege. And that senior privilege was if you went to school in the town that you lived in and for some reason moved out of it, you were allowed to go your senior year. That senior privilege doesn't exist anymore. And so what we've seen a lot of times is we've had kids who had gone to the district through high school, who by issues that have come up, parents have moved out of their home, parents have divorced, they've moved out of district, but still been able to hang with their friends. And if we really want to talk about social emotional learning, I can't think of anything worse than, than being a kid who went to Middleborough. I can't think of anything worse than, than being a kid who went to Middleborough in one case that I know halfway through the twelfth grade. And to be told he'd need to graduate someplace else because his, you know, his, his hometown was no longer Middleborough, even though he had only had four or five months left to graduate. And so that's the other piece. A lot of these kids, especially at the high school that we found, have been going to the high school for a period in time. And then something happened in the family that needed them to move, and so they applied for choice. We haven't had a lot of kids coming into the district from outside, just looking for a new district. We've had a lot of people who have had families somewhere in Middleborough coming in and being a part of it because it made sense for them. Any other comments? Then there's a motion on the table to approve and become a school choice community. As we know, in the virtual times, it calls for a roll call vote. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Givinoni?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And unanimous, thank you. We'll go back to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to back up for a moment if I can, and I put related MOAs. You had an MOA in your Dropbox with regard to ed evaluation for the rest of the year. That has been agreed upon in principle with the Middleborough Education Association. And I don't know if the, if the committee would like to vote tonight to have the chair sign. I know the chair has been authorized to sign in the past. And how you'd like to handle that, Mr. Young, goes to you. But I didn't mean to skip over that. That was addition, that was in the COVID-nineteen and related MOAs.
Mr. Chair? Yes.
I would move that we approve the MO, the MOA and authorize you to sign it on our behalf.
Do I hear a second? Second? Discussion? Mr. Oakley?
I just wondered, just an opportunity for me to learn a little bit more in, in the briefest way possible, because I could take this offline with you guys also. I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about the, the evaluation process for teachers? Because obviously it was MOA. And specifically, who is it that evaluates the teachers? Is it their department chair, or how does that work?
I'm going to let the superintendent answer that question, because none of us evaluate teachers. So, Mr. Lynch?
Through, through you, Mr. Chair, and to Mr. Oakley and other members of the committee. I know we have three teachers on the board, so those folks are probably very familiar with the process. There is a recommended state evaluation tool, which contains a rubric of four standards. And we have at the building, building level, we have principals and assistant principals who are ultimately responsible for the evaluation of the teachers within the building, with the input of department heads, the input of teacher leaders, the input of other folks in the building. But it is ultimately the principals, assistant principals, sped facilitators, the director of curriculum instruction, the pupil personnel services director. Anyone in a supervisory administrative position within the district can evaluate a teacher. But it is based on observations, whether they be announced or unannounced, and monitoring of that teacher and what that teacher does in terms of professional development and how that teacher engages families, and also what goes on in the classroom. So it's a pretty detailed rubric, Mr. Oakley. I can certainly share that with you. It is something that was recommended by the state. I believe it was six years ago, and districts had to negotiate on whether they were going to use the states or adopt the states, or either adopt the states or modify the states. And Middleborough basically adopted the state rubric, which is contained on the Department of Elementary and Secondary website, which is a detailed rubric of, of everything a teacher is expected to do through the course of a year. And in some cases, a couple of years, especially if they're a new folk, new teacher. And basically, that is done at the building level by building administrators. And there's a formative evaluation halfway through the year for young folk, for new folks, and a summative at the end of the year, a summative for the folks that have professional status. And it's, it's a fairly complicated system. But if it's simplified, it's based on four standards that all teachers should be really good at. And if they're, if they're really good at it, they're, they're graded as proficient or determined to be proficient. And if they are able to model what they're being asked to do, whether it be through teaching a class or, or providing meetings, whether it be a teacher leader or department head, then they can be evaluated as exemplary. But there are very few teachers who are exemplary. The expectation would be that, that most folks would be proficient, because that's exactly what we're looking for, is a professional or highly proficient teacher. I hope that answers your question, Mr. Oakley.
Yep, it does. Thank you very much. And Mr.
You're fading it out, but go ahead. Again, Rich, can you say that again?
Oh, sorry, can you hear me okay?
We can now.
Okay, Mr. Chair, obviously, this is a memorandum of, of understanding, so it, it seems like all parties agreed. But I just wanted to get your take on it. Was everyone happy with this?
Yeah, so to be honest with you, you know, I'll be quite honest with you. When, most of negotiations, when we do negotiations, we sit down and have a negotiation. For things like this, again, this is not something that the school committee is involved with. This is something that the administrators are involved with. So I asked the administrators to get together with the union and put together a, a plan, and then to run it by me to make sure I didn't have any problems, and then I bring it to you. So it's, it's not like I'm not a part of it, but it just doesn't seem like a piece that makes sense for me to chime in on when I'm not the one doing it. I chime in on it with the superintendent afterwards. We go over it together. We, he answers my questions, I answer his. We sort of bounce things back and forth on each other when they meet. But it's not a situation in which I'm sitting down with people having conversations about it.
And, and through you, Mr. Chair, this MOA was designed because when we finished the school year technically on March thirteenth, the evaluation process was truncated. So, so we had a process that required so many observations, whether it be walkthroughs or formal observations, and so many sort of visits to a classroom, which were scheduled to occur but couldn't occur because of the time. We still had a couple of months left, two, two, three months left of the process. So what this MOA accounts for is that time span being cut. And what this, this accounts for, for the dates and times and such, and, and all of the legalists, legalese that's required with regard to the evaluation process. Because the evaluation process, quite frankly, determines a great deal. It determines where a teacher is, whether they're a developing teacher, whether they're a proficient teacher, whether they need additional assistance. And also, it's a decision for the, for the district to make whether somebody without professional status should no longer be invited to come back and their contract not be renewed, their individual. So I hope that that helps you understand.
Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Stevens?
So I did look at this because as a teacher, you know, we're under a great deal of stress with this new world we're living in, developing new programs, learning new software, adjusting our curriculum, trying to reach students all day long. So I, I think the MOA as presented seemed very fair to me. I think it gives teachers some space where they can focus on the students and not have to worry about a new, you know, paperwork that's involved. So I, I appreciate the work that everybody did, and I think it's very fair.
Anyone else have any comments?
And, Mr. Chair, I just want to acknowledge the fact that, that different folks help out with different projects. And this is a project that, that the ed evaluation piece has been worked on with a subcommittee, which includes Paul Branigan, Derek Thompson, and Melanie Gates. And they have worked exclusively before my time, and certainly during my time, to refine the educator evaluation process with a group of folks from the Middleborough Education Association. They've been, they've developed a great working relationship, an honest, open relationship. And they were able to basically negotiate the basis of this, which was then vetted through our school attorney to make sure that the, the legalese was set. And, and that's the document that the school committee had before them this evening.
So with that, Sean, I'm going to ask you to bring up all the school committee members. Thank you. Meg, I know you were out of the loop for the piece. Did you have any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so given that, I have a motion on the table and a second. So again, I'll go by roll call vote. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Givinoni?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And so we'll go back to the superintendent, this next particular piece. What we're going to do with this piece is we're going to do the tech audit. I'm going to let the superintendent and Sarah have it with the, the people who did the audit. And then I'm going to ask probably a couple of school committee members to come back at a time, Sean, so they can ask questions of the audit. So thank you. I'll turn it over to the superintendent and, and Sarah.
Hi, for this part, I'm going to introduce Sarah Hickey, who's our Director of Business and Finance. As the chair knows and, and the school committee knows, we were charged as a school district to take a serious look at our technology department. We felt the best way to do that is to conduct an audit of the entire department and the entire district with regard to technology. And I'm happy to say that, that Sarah Hickey has led this effort and is here tonight to sort of inform you, maybe give you a quick summary, and then introduce the two folks, or at least the one folk. If they're, I'm not sure if both of them are here tonight. Dave and Aaron are here both tonight. That's great. So they will then present some of the findings of the audit. Ms. Hickey?
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. So a year ago, or a little bit more than a year ago, I was tasked with finding out some information about our technology department. I came into the Middleborough Public School District in the fall of twenty-eighteen, and I had a lot of questions that I was asking. And I am the money person, and the big question I wanted to have the answer to was, for the amount of money that we're spending in our technology department, are we getting the bang for the buck? And that's not an easy question to answer. And so I was tasked with finding specialists in the technology field that could come out and take a look at our technology department and do a fair and honest assessment of what we have, what are, for our assets and what we offer for our students and our teachers. And I was happy to contract with Direct Computer, which is Aaron Hyer and Dave Cawthorn. They came out in, well, we, we started off, after many, many conversations over many months, we started off with providing them with a boatload of documents. And they came out in person in January and ran, did some focus groups, had some interviews, spent a couple days up to their elbows in the district. And I'm happy to have them here tonight to go over their findings with us.
How are you? So again, my name's Aaron Hyer. This is my, my counterpart, Dave Cawthorn. Together, we've collectively have approximately fifty years' experience in educational technology. And we're, we're glad to be here virtually with you tonight and presenting the findings from the technology assessment that we engaged in with your staff, your administrators, your teachers, your specialists earlier this year. I'm going to go ahead and try to share my screen with you here. So as Sarah mentioned, we, we began speaking early in the school year about a technology assessment. And that assessment, when we first started speaking, was largely around infrastructure, devices, tech, technology operations. That conversation quickly, quickly shifted. And we were excited about that because both Dave and I are very passionate about instructional technology and, and digital learning. So working together, we were able to create a more detailed assessment plan that, that was very purposeful and would take a look at some very specific areas within digital, from digital learning to infrastructure. So the purpose of the assessment really was to, to look at the infrastructure, look at the support processes, and then help the district determine how it can best plan to support and develop its instructional technology and digital learning initiatives in the future. Again, starting with the foundations assessment, largely, you know, device-specific, hardware-specific, infrastructure-specific, and then really refining that process to, to narrow down what we wanted to look at and what the district was most interested in collecting data on. So we ended up settling on investigating the technology vision, planning process, leadership, digital learning and technology integration, and technology support from a help desk perspective, looking at, at break, fix, and the, the support that the technology department is able to offer. Going right into what we learned from this process is, is we really learned that Middleborough is a very supportive community and really supports the district's technology initiatives, both through the department budget, through the funding of the capital improvement requests, and ongoing community partnerships, including its partnership, for example, with, with cable access. You know, from there, we, we looked at, at the district vision and the understanding of the district's vision for the use of technology to enhance curriculum and teaching. We, we spoke to many stakeholders and, and many constituents in this case. And, and we heard lots of really exciting visions for the, for the use of technology. But what was clear is that there wasn't necessarily a vision that was, was articulated, articulated from the district level and that was consistent throughout the district. So I'm not going to go through the findings specific each individually, because I, I know that this has been shared with you. But I'm going to touch upon some highlights from, from each area of the assessment. And then at the end, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to answer questions. Some, some other findings were that both the technology department and other stakeholder groups lacked a clear methodology for selecting and implementing technology. Again, this is supported by, by data from multiple sources, from document review, to the focus groups from the different constituent groups as well. The district technology planning, the, the objectives all consistent with, with the, the district strategic plan, the school plans, but really just lacking the strategies necessary in terms of meeting the district's teaching and learning objectives. So lots of, you know, planning around one-to-one and the deployment of devices. But really lacking some of the strategies needed in terms of professional development, in terms of digital learning, in terms of, you know, blended learning, the strategies in, in which are used in the classroom, which we use these devices to meet our, our teaching and learning objectives. Gaps in the relationship between technology and the curriculum. This is a thing that's, that's often present in, in K-12 and, and higher ed as well, right? So you have your, your tech, your tech techies, right? Your technology team, and then you have your ed tech. We'll be talking a little bit more about this later on in the, in the report. Lack of instructional technology leadership. So this isn't necessarily one, the role of one person, right? But leadership can, can present in, in many ways. And instructional technology leadership is, is something that there needs to be capacity for throughout the organization, whether it's at the grade level, it's the building level, and the district level. In the area of digital learning and technology integration, access to technology and, and hardware and software varies by grade level. We know that you're, you're scaling your one-to-one deployment, and that's a very exciting thing for, for Middleborough. We know that you have one-to-one at the middle school, where students have access to devices throughout the school day. And at the high school, where students are assigned devices in which they take home as well. And that there's various one-to-one computing opportunities for students at the elementary levels, whether that's through tablet devices or laptops or in computer labs. A limited number of curriculum resources had digital learning experiences and technology integration embedded in them. These were mostly curriculum resources where the digital learning experiences were, were where the digital learning experiences were implicit or embedded. For example, the Discovery Ed Tech book, where the delivery of the material, the curriculum, is through digital learning resources and materials. Technology integration and digital learning is inconsistent from teacher to teacher. So although there's consistency with the delivery of the curriculum, the experience for students varied from teacher to teacher, right? So a student in one class with one teacher may have a very digitally-rich learning experience with lots of digital learning opportunities and lots of integration of technology, where in another course with another teacher, it may not be as rich. Instructional technology, professional development has been infrequent. And what we heard was that during the early stages of implementation of one-to-one, there was lots of training, there was lots of professional development, there was some ed tech-type professional development days and PLCs. But in the last several years, that those professional development opportunities have been less frequent. And in the area of tech support and help desk, there really appears to be an appropriate amount of staff, staffing level in terms of the technology department. The technology department offers an above-average hardware and software support. Everyone we talked about, just about everyone we talked to, said that the response from the tech department was very good, that the people were very responsive and willing to help. In the review of job descriptions, there were some job descriptions where there were discrepancies between the present level of service, what people were actually doing, and what the job descriptions entailed. I think currently, the position of CTO, the actual job description title is Technology Systems Administrator. This is an example of one of the job descriptions that would be worth taking a look at. Lastly, there was really evidence of a disconnect between the technology department and then kind of the instructional programming that really seemed to kind of hinder the implementation of digital learning objectives. So some gaps between the implementation of technology and devices and then the curriculum itself. So what we always say is that the hardware and the infrastructure should really be driven by the curriculum. And the curriculum should not be driven by what hardware and infrastructure you have. And again, we'll be talking about this a little bit more later in the report. So in terms of the process, again, starting off with the pre-technology assessment, we met with stakeholders in the Middleborough Public Schools. We looked at really our basic foundations assessment, and we went from there really being intentional and purposeful about what data we wanted to collect and what information would be most beneficial to the district in terms of the future technology planning. From there, we went into the assessment stage. We conducted focus groups with school principals, district administrators, teachers, specialists at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And then we went engaged in several months of analysis and review of all the documentation and policies and procedures and things that were shared with us, as well as our notes from the focus groups. And that resulted in the findings that we just shared with you and the recommendations we'll be sharing. So in terms of recommendations, the technology, under technology vision, planning, and leadership, this first recommendation is a little bit different. So it's to establish a district-wide working group to research and recommend the use of technology to improve curriculum and enhance teaching and learning outcomes. And typically, when we talk about how this work gets done, we want this work to be embedded throughout all of the planning, whether it's the district strategic planning, whether it's your curriculum review cycle. We don't want technology to be thought of as something separate or as something extra, or something that you put on top of your curriculum or you put on top of your instruction. But through the conversations and through the analysis of the data, what we found is that there hasn't been a lot of communication in terms of technology, in terms of curriculum. And we felt that this would be a good starting point to reengage in these conversations and progress towards having this type of planning and conversation become part of your district-wide planning, whether that's, again, through curriculum review cycles or your strategic planning or school improvement plans. Adopting a standard methodology for evaluation, the implementation of instructional technology. So there are several, you know, ERP or resource planning implementation methodologies that have been adopted to education and instructional technology. Really wanting to have a methodology that focuses on creating a quality, positive impact to your instructional program. So, you know, many of these methodologies, right? So you're defining requirements, you're analyzing, you're planning, you're designing, you're building, you're piloting, right? And then you're fully deploying and then coming back to the planning stage or analysis stage, right? So what's the goal? Where is the need, right? Designing a solution for that need, then building the requirements in terms of what technology is needed and deploying that, and then reassessing, right? So we found that often the conversation seemed to be that there was some design happening, right? Or that was driven by technology or technology requirements. You know, so really wanting to have a quality methodology in place, right? So where you can define a problem and then plan, implement, and then evaluate and assess how things worked out. In terms of recommendations, reconfiguring the organizational structure to increase technology leadership. So again, technology leadership really needs, we really need to find a way that best meets the needs of the organization to build capacity in the area of technology leadership throughout the organization. So the implementation of technology requires, you know, support and leadership at all levels, but also an understanding of the educational program, the instructional program, and, you know, the student needs, right? So this leadership needs to be, you know, built out through the organization. Evaluate and update the technology department positions and job descriptions. Really taking an inventory of the talent that you have internally, also looking outside of the technology department and what talents people have and whether that's coaching, whether that's providing technology leadership, and taking inventory of those and seeing what you have internally within the organization to offer. Establish a five-year capital plan. One of the things that's supported in multiple data sets is that people are concerned about investing time into building skills or developing skills or materials or professional development because they're worried about the sustainability of the technology model and the funding. And having a five-year capital plan, which can be communicated to staff, right, would definitely go a long way in terms of buy-in, in terms of the staff. Again, building leadership and capacity to design, implement, and evaluate digital learning practices throughout the district. So this is within, at the classroom level, the specialist level, the school building, you know, administration principal level and district level. Now, digital learning and technology integration, identifying a model, strategies to be used to help teachers integrate technology, for example, the STEM model. Build capacities to support innovative technology integration and digital learning practices to ensure support for digital learning objectives. So this is, you know, finding a way to build capacity with technology coaching. We know that you do have some stipended technology coaching positions, but in some cases, we heard that it's very difficult for these technology coaches to get out of the classroom and have time to have consults with other teachers and support teachers with instructional practices. Implementing targeted differentiated professional development. Where we talk about differentiating our instruction and personalizing our learning. So as adult learners too, we often need to differentiate our professional development when it comes to technology because we have educators that are at all levels of the learning continuum. We need to be able to best support their learning, right? So we always have our early adopters. They're the initiators, the ones that are constantly seeking professional development. But then we also have our reluctant adopters. So we need to meet our adult learners too, just like our students, where they are in terms of the learning continuum. Additionally, infusing technology and digital learning into the professional development. So building a culture where the technology, again, is not separate. It's not something that we add after, but it's integrated. And this is a great way to model the use of technology and integration skills, right, through our professional development. And in terms of not having opportunities, right, to provide technology integration, professional development, there's so many things that we're tasked with doing initiatives in areas of professional development need. So the integration of this professional development into other areas, right? It's essential in order to be able to get the time to do it, but also to provide it in an authentic way that builds skills for teachers. Establishing positions for technology coaches. You know, we heard from staff that the coaching model, right, modeling and coaching lends the best for them in terms of learning new skills. We know that technology coaching is essential for implementing digital learning. Lastly, in the area of the support, help desk, really evaluate and update all technology department positions and job descriptions. Again, taking inventory of what you have in terms of internal talents and areas that people can provide additional support and provide the best value and making sure that these job descriptions and positions really meet your current and future needs in terms of supporting your instructional program. The integration of audiovisual support and personnel. I mean, technology and audiovisual, they're so closely aligned now that integrating support, you know, in this area, whether it's, you know, projectors or digital displays, right? Technology staff and multimedia support or audiovisual support being integrated would provide a lot of value. What we heard from the technology staff too was they really want to be more engaged, right? And this is something that's so important in terms of keeping technology focused on the core mission of the school, which is students providing instruction, you know, instruction and learning for students and student achievement. So this was great to hear that the staff was wanting to be more engaged in these processes. So taking steps to expand the understanding of the instructional program by all technology department, but also developing a process whereby the technology department can play an integral role in all the planning and technology recommendations. And then lastly, again, adopting a standard methodology for evaluation and implementation of hardware to ensure that the process, you know, has an emphasis on program quality and has a positive impact on your teaching and learning program. So in terms of next steps, and Dave, you've been awfully quiet here. So please feel free to help out. Communicate, really. So what should digital learning look like in the Middleborough Public Schools, you know, moving in for 2020? I'm sure that this conversation has taken on a new life in the circumstance, under the circumstances we're currently in. But also continuing to research, continuing this research, continuing this conversation, using these findings and recommendations to inform your future planning, and lastly, to develop the plan. So opportunity for questions.
I'm in there and just thing that we really heard was that you have a great staff and you have a great group of teachers that are really willing to take risks and step out there and go out there and really try to impact students in a positive way. So from a culture perspective, I think, you know, you guys are in a great spot primed for something great to happen in regards to digital learning. And as Aaron said, obviously, we've been forced into a little bit more of remote learning, which obviously is digital in some capacity for both our students and our kids and teachers, as well as administrators too, right? So, you know, it gives opportunities to leverage that as you move forward with your strategic planning to say, all right, when we're looking at next year or next week, what does that look like? And how can we implement some of these digital learning tools as we move forward? So it was exciting to hear the great things that your teachers are doing in the classroom. And I think it's a culture that, again, has some great opportunity in the horizon for you.
Guys, I want to thank you for what you sent us, findings, everything like that. I thought it was fantastic. Sarah, I want to thank you for putting this all together and sort of running the show from your perspective. The school committee tasked you with this job, and so we appreciate what came up. I do have a couple of questions before I turn it over to the other school committee. My first question is around the stakeholders. And that is from your evaluation, do the stakeholders feel like they're involved in decision-making process for what technology comes into our schools?
So I think that what the data shows is that there's definitely a disconnect in terms of what the decision-making process is. And I think that speaks directly to the recommendation of selecting a standard kind of implementation and evaluation methodology in which, you know, you're defining the problem, you know, for instance, or for example, you're trying to improve student reading and achievement around student reading at the elementary level. You investigate the problem. You propose a solution to the problem, right? And then you identify what technology is needed to support that solution. Then you pilot, right, the potential solution. And then you implement the solution if the pilot goes well. But then again, it culminates, right, in the reassessment process, right? So you make an assessment at the end. Did this meet the need? And then you start over. So there definitely is some gaps in terms of understanding, in terms of what the evaluation and implementation process is and whether people feel that they have a voice in it. In some cases, it definitely feels like there's definitely not a clear understanding in terms of what the process is. And that was something that the data shows throughout the stakeholder groups, whether it's the technology department, whether it's teachers, whether it's administrators. So again, that speaks to the recommendation in terms of developing, you know, a clear process in which you're selecting and implementing technology initiatives.
And then from reading the report, I just want to, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, from reading everything that you sent to us, I would say, looking at this, that the greatest strengths our technology department has is in its help desk and support services. And maybe the biggest challenge it has is working with technology towards curriculum. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so just about everyone we spoke to feels that technology support is very responsive in terms of hardware or software, break-fix, you know, in terms of being able to work within the constraints, whether it's budget, whether it's hardware, and provide a good level of service and quick level of service. Where we see gaps or the relationship between technology, whether it be infrastructure and hardware. Where we see gaps or, or the relationship between technology, whether the infrastructure and hardware and the instructional program, right, the teaching and learning. So how to best close those gaps, you know, I, I think would, would, it would be an area of further research and, and investigation.
And, and that would also come down to your, your, your goal setting and your vision and your strategic planning around that. Because I think it's really important to know that you're not alone in this, in this challenge. And, you know, to make the technology components, not about the device, but about student achievement is, uh, it's a culture shift and it's a difficult thing to go through and to A, understand, but B, to be able to figure out how you can, you know, analyze it, assess it and be productive and effective with it. So, um, so you guys aren't alone in that, in that, in that challenge. But ultimately where the shift in instructional technology and digital learning is going is to get out of the conversations about what device do I need and more into the, into the idea of what do we need to do to better, best impact our kids?
And, and the last question I have for you is this, you've recommended that we review new, different models and a different setup. Is that because in your opinion, keeping the exact same model we have isn't going to bring us to where we need to be?
I don't know if it's necessarily our, our opinion, but I, I think when we engage in this conversation against the conversation quickly shifted from being interested in knowing if you had the physical hardware and software, right? In terms of a technical standpoint to what are we doing with it? And what is, what does our teaching and learning look like in terms of embedded instructional technology, embedded technology learning, right? So, so I think, you know, from my perspective, it, it seems that the district is most interested in taking it to the next level in terms of what's happening in the instructional program and providing a more equitable student experience when it comes to technology integration and digital learning. You know, one, one of, I don't know how, how much time you've had to review the full assessment report, but with our, in our first day or for several hours of our, our, our focus groups. You know, somebody shared with us that in terms of if we look at what students are doing outside of, of our schools in terms of the use of technology, right? That they equated, I believe, to yelling into an echo chamber, you know, that, that we're still trying to do things the way we've always done them. And, and if we take stock and what, what students are doing and how they're experiencing things outside of school and learning outside of school, that it's time to make a shift, right? So again, it seems that, um, really that, that, that was a focus. There was plenty of conversation about hardware and devices and older devices versus new devices and the reliability of devices and infrastructure. But I think that that's something the district, you know, has a handle on in terms of planning. I think again, as Dave said, there's lots of exciting things going on in classrooms with digital learning and with technology integration. But it's how do you really move everybody again through that learning continuum, right? So you have your early adopters and you know, those are, those are the, the teachers that are always seeking out new opportunities with digital learning. But how do we move everybody, you know, through the learning continuum in terms of digital learning?
And before I forget, I do want to mention one thing, just because we've had a conversation. Because you created this, the audit and, and gave us your results. You're willing to continue with us and help us and sort of be a resource to help us move to the next levels. You're not just dropping your audit down and saying, thanks very much. Enjoy yourselves. Have a good day.
No, absolutely. And, and again, so Dave and I, we work both with, with instruction, digital learning and the hardware and, and hardware and infrastructure. But we also work with a number of other consultants too, that can provide expertise in, in any given area in the K-12 technology environment.
Great. I'm going to ask Sean to open it up to other members of the school committee. I think he's going to bring in Greg and Rich, and I'll ask you guys if you have any questions. Greg, if you want to go first.
Um, I was impressed with the depth of the audit. It was really all encompassing and that was fantastic. I don't really have any questions. I'm just going to kind of watch Rich go away with his questions and enjoy the show.
All right. So Mr. Oakley, you're up, my friend.
Do I have a reputation or? Anyway, much Aaron and Dave, this has been really great. And when I was reviewing the tech audit ahead of this meeting, you kind of just answered this, but I, I'd still like to address it just for my own education. I'm kind of the new guy here. So be, you know, before I heard your answer a few minutes ago, that the focus was more on the organizational setup of our tech department, the, this kind of structural way that we evaluate and the leadership. I was kind of just, I'm kind of a tech guy myself and I was, I was, I was waiting for, you know, some questions about, you know, Chromebook versus like Windows-based laptop and, and, um, you know, the nuts and bolts and the server tech and stuff like that. But I think I understand now that you feel pretty comfortable with our handle on the actual devices and hardware. And so my main question is, is, does this evaluation that you did for us look like the evaluation that you do for other school districts? Or are you sometimes much more focused on hardware than you were with us?
So often the process is much more focused on, on hardware, right? Cause we're working with districts that that have deficits in that area, right? And that's what the specific conversation starts with hardware as a foundation. And as I'm presenting this to you, it, it's funny, we're talking with the foundations assessment. This is really not very similar to any foundations assessment we've done because it is much more comprehensive and much more focused on the digital learning and instructional technology and, and planning and leadership areas than it is hardware. So, so, but these audits and these assessments, again, they, they're designed to provide you with the, the most amount of value. Because of the conversations and, and that pre-assessment stage, we're able to really focus in on what the biggest or the most the, the biggest area of interest is, and then try to provide you with the most, most value in those areas. In terms of the findings, it is really important to understand the process to, to read through the assessment and know what the objectives are of the assessment. Because although they, they do stand, um, they do stand alone, right? In terms of the, the, the findings and recommendations. They're very, very purposeful and they're very direct so that you can, they can provide you with the most direction and the clearest understanding in terms of as you enter the next stage, which is that planning stage, right? The continuing of research and then planning for what the next steps are in terms of what is digital learning? What does technology look like and what does it mean here in Middleborough? So it's easy to talk about a lot of, a lot of hardware or a lot of digital learning, right? And then make recommendations and findings. Our findings are, are pretty sharp because we want them to be very, very helpful for you in your technology planning process.
And, and we think it's also very important that, um, that you go through the planning and evaluation process prior to having the hardware conversation, because the hardware conversation is one that you can really kind of take you off, off task and off track and, and throw you into a, you know, a, a bunch of different, you know, avenues to, to be able to pursue. So I think it's really important that, that the foundation gets built first and then identify the problems and the needs that you have. And then you can take a look at, okay, now that we can identify where we want to go. Now it's, what, how are we going to get there? And then that's when the hardware conversation can come back to the table. But we, we feel very strongly about you need to have that foundational conversation first and develop that organizational structure from the top down, that's really supportive of the vision and the, the direction that everybody, the whole Middle Borough Public Schools is going to, going to journey through together. So I think that that's really important.
Really too, just shifting the conversation from the devices, from the word technology, from gadgets, right? To learning, right? That, that's core to the mission, right? That's, that's what we're doing every day with students is about learning. So by using terms like digital learning or instructional technology, it's something that is core to what we're doing and is, is universal in terms of, of language. It's, it's in line with the language and the conversations we're having everywhere else. So we talk about technology, sometimes you'll have teachers or, or students, right? Or, 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 um, support educational operations, the support staff to say, technology, I'm not good at technology, right? It's like, I'm not a good reader. I'm not good at math, right? So it's part of the learning process and using terms where we're talking about learning, teachers understand talking about learning.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay, I just had one more question. And it's really directed at you, Mr. Chair. I just wondered, I, I saw a mention of a three-year plan in there, but, um, I, I think I've been on SchoolCom for a couple of years now and I, I hadn't heard about that. I just wondered if you could address what that three-year plan was about.
Yeah. So, uh, we don't have that three-year plan. The, um, I've checked and thankfully Mr. Jimonobi had sent some information to me because I had asked him to. Um, we, the three-year plan that they were given was 2019 to 2023. It was, uh, uh, we haven't seen it. So it may be something internal from technology, uh, but it hasn't been something that was shared with the superintendent or myself.
Okay. Thanks.
So any other questions, Greg or Rich? Then I'm going to ask Sean to move you out and we'll move in, um, uh, Brian and Meg. And Brian, I apologize because I know that was going to be your next question. But we'll go with you next, Brian, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first thing I want to do is, uh, when we start talking about technology, I wanted to acknowledge Aaron's mobile office. Great mobile office, great idea. I'm thinking about doing the same thing. Your mobile office, really mobile is great. During the entire presentation, the word lack came out quite a bit. And, uh, I, I, I appreciate an honest evaluation because that's what we're looking for. You know, a lot of evaluations, sometimes someone hires someone to do an evaluation and the evaluator is just tell you what, you know, what that person wants to hear and, and pat you on the back. Because we spent a lot of money, we've done, done a lot of technology upgrades. But the biggest thing that I heard today was curriculum drives hardware. It's not, hey, we need to go out and get a bunch of hardware. It's curriculum should be driving the hardware, which I thought was, I, it, it, it sounds simple, but it just, it clicked in a certain way. When I read, when I read the, the audit, I, I went back and I, and I did a search and I did find that 2013 to 2017 report that was, it was finally approved, I believe on September 4th of 2014. Because I, I, I do keep track of, I keep all my, my, uh, all of my drop boxes. And I, and I was looking at that technology report from back then. I was hoping that I had the 2019. I didn't have it. Cause I really want to see what the vision in the 2019 technology plan that we draft technology plan, because we haven't approved it yet, what is actually in there? I'd love to see the vision because we keep talking about lacking things and we talk about, we have to make sure of the right vision. Those two things came together a lot during this presentation and it really, it did, it did concern me. I think that, uh, the, the comment of, I was looking at, you know, the same thing on hardware, Chrome versus Windows. I've been talking about that for a long time. And then I just said to myself, you know, put that aside because once again, you go back to curriculum driving the hardware. So I think that we've got a first step here. I think we really have a second step and, uh, being the short-term guy, uh, I'll only be here for another month till the, till the next election, month and a half. But, um, we've got some steps that we can make moving forward, um, even during this, uh, this, this, uh, situation that we're in right now. But I'd like to really work on, um, filling in those gaps in that, that tech, tech, uh, curriculum. Those gaps that were just mentioned, I think we can work on that and that, that, uh, that instructional leadership piece, I think that that's the other one that we could really work on. And, and if we do that, we're going to literally, we're going to use our technology that we have, but we're going to turn this around, I think. And then as we turn it around, um, we can let that, that curriculum to drive that hardware. I just, I, I, I heard those words that really, really resonated with me. And I'm, and I'm glad that they're here to make this presentation. So I, I don't have a question, um, other than I'd love to see the 2019, 2023, uh, uh, technology plan. Other than that, um, I'm going to pass it along to Meg and, uh, let her ask some questions. Thank you.
Right ahead, Meg. Thanks, Brad.
Um, so I just wanted to, uh, it's not really for you guys, but maybe more so for, um, Mr. Lynch. So going forward, what, when I was reading through it, I just saw that there was a lot of, um, the teachers felt that they didn't have the support that they needed. So yes, we're lacking some things at the district level, but we need to really focus on the teachers and supporting them in the classroom. And now that we're in this kind of virtual world, if we could identify some people that have done this very well, maybe we could, um, have them do some PD around things that they did during this time, but definitely looking at how we can support the teachers moving forward.
So Meg, if you don't mind, what I'm going to do is I'm going to let Greg talk next. And then I'll bring back Brian with Sarah for their comments, if that's okay? And I'll ask them to answer your piece.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So Sean, I'll ask if we can go to Greg. And Greg, I want to make sure you've got your questions in.
Thank you. Yeah. Looking through this report, I mean, there's obviously a lot of information to digest very quickly. But I think the thing that really struck me was page 49, I think of your report where you do your strength and weakness. Summary, I thought that was good. I just want to say, I think the strength and opportunities that you listed out, I, I agree with. I think everything looks good. The threats, I don't feel, I'm not as worried about that because, you know, as a school committee, we do a budget review every year. So I think a lot of your threats, I'm not so worried about. But the weaknesses really stood out to me. If you could talk more, like I, I just feel like that it, it just seems to jump off the page that like, uh, Brian Jimononi mentioned before was lack of methodology for selecting and implementing, uh, technology hardware. You, you know, it just seems like the planning part, technology planning, well, that's a big deal that we don't have that, that, that. And so I would get like your opinions and how do we fix like those weaknesses? I think we should address immediately. Cause the other things like the threats will follow. If we fix those weaknesses, then I think those threats go away. If you could speak more on the weaknesses, I'd appreciate that.
I, I would, I would jump in and, and say that, um, you guys are in a pretty good spot in terms of, you know, being, taking a look at how you can start to implement some transformation and, and, and change in culture. Will help you start to develop that methodology for selecting and implementing based on your curriculum conversations. And again, I think the reason that we highlight that, we, we do have some, the data from our, our focus groups mentioned that, uh, but it also is that without that connection between that hardware and that curriculum piece is that you, you really kind of just spin and you don't really move anywhere. So that whole piece of being able to really develop a plan that says, this is what we need to do from an instructional perspective. And this is how we're going to do it. And this is the, the, the methods that we're going to do to select and, and analyze it and implement what we're going to try to do. And removing the word technology out of the conversation and making it more, uh, a teaching and learning conversation and, and embedding digital learning into that. So, you know, I think that is, is the, is the direction that we feel like every school district obviously needs to be looking at those avenues to be able to really impact student achievement in those ways. And to develop that. So basically that weakness piece is the way that, hey, we need to develop a plan to address this. And they're basically the steps that, that, that all go in hand in hand to make that happen.
Thank you.
That is your question.
It, it does. Yep. Thank you.
Greg, do you have any more questions?
I just want to clarify that, um, the three-year report that the plan that came in was, did, did not come through this committee and did not go through the superintendent.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. So Sean, if you bring in Brian. I just want to give Brian and Sarah a chance to make any comments that they want.
I'll, I'll start and let Sarah finish, uh, but I would say that, that, uh, I think on page 49, Greg, you're exactly right, that, that page is to me is very telling in terms of this analysis. And it focuses on, on four areas, uh, one being technology leadership, one be tech, technology planning is the second one. Technology professional development is the third. And in the terms, in terms of
And in the terms, in terms of selection, implementing technology, it's sort of the methodology piece, though. So it's also a planning piece, but it's also the technology that we're purchasing, making sure it's being purchased with the curriculum in mind that needs to be driving the technology purchases. So that's sort of the piece that I focused on to answer Meg's question, or to try to answer Meg's question, and certainly I can clarify for her if I don't. But the idea being that, once we take a real deep look at this full analysis, which we received this week, we then will, as far as I'm concerned, will take actions as a district. And if we need to redesign the department, we'll redesign the department, as recommended. If we need to take a look at leadership and technology in the district, we'll take a look at technology and leadership, it's clear that we need to do that. If we need, we need to take a look at the planning that's going on, and the planning that needs to go on, and we'll need to address that, certainly. We'll look at professional development, as Aaron mentioned. We had an incredible year three years ago, when we put in the one-on-one devices, or four years ago, when we put in the one-on-one devices. And we had a full year of curriculum, technology development. And we have definitely dropped some of that off, we have renewed that. Sean Siciliano and Melanie have put together a nice program for teachers right now, during this digital age here, for workshops that they can go to and look at, and develop professionally. And then that last piece, that sort of methodology for selecting and implementing technology, that is something that the process is something that we have to redesign as a school district, because if it's, we're going about it the wrong way, clearly. And we need to readdress that and reassess that and plan for the future. So it's definitely a call to arms here, in terms of what we need to do as a district to effectively implement technology. A budget, as Sarah mentioned, characterized at the very beginning, that's a very large budget, and it needs to be a more effective budget, obviously, with this report, and it's something, some of the things we already knew going into the report. But I can let, I can hand it over to Sarah, if you'd like, Sarah.
Please. Thank you. Meg, to address your question, as you read through the report, one of the comments in one of the focus groups with the teachers really jumped out at me. And the teacher said that the administration has high expectations. And when I saw that, I said to myself, "Yeah, our students deserve the best." So do we have high expectations? Definitely. And as you know, Meg, I was a teacher for a long, long time, and I really got your concern about the support part for the teachers. And I look at this audit process and the results of this audit as being the beginning of a very deliberate building of more support for teachers, so they can assist our students be the very best they can be. So I hope that answers your question.
If it's okay with you, I'm going to bring back the school committee members for a portion of this right now, if that's okay with everybody? So Sean, I'm going to ask you to bring back school committee members. Except for Greg, who's just coming back. We'll give Greg a minute. So I'll wait for Sean to find out if Greg's in there. What I wanted to say was, in my mind, this involves two processes for us. The first is the easy one. And that would be that the chair would recommend that we approve the tech audit as presented to us this week. Do I have a motion for that?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the tech audit as presented.
Thank you, Brian. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion of that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would love, nothing better than to get that tech audit out to the public if they wanted to look at it. It is a great document, and as Greg Stevens did point out, the SWOT analysis on page 49 sums it up. I would also love to get a copy of the presentation that the team put together and gave us tonight, the PowerPoint slides. That is very to the point, and I think that that would go a long way if the public really wants to know, all 18 of them that are watching right now, if they want to see it as well.
We're up to 24 at one point. So I agree with you, Brian, and we can ask that they send that over to us, and we'll make that available as. Any other questions about the motion to approve the tech audit? Seeing that requires a roll call. Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Jimononi?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The second is the more difficult one, and that's this. The school committee put into play the idea of a tech audit. We wanted a tech audit, and we received one. Given the results of the tech audit, my suggestion would be to take a motion from this committee asking that the superintendent redevelop the tech department, given.
Go move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, we asked for something specific. We wanted an audit done, we wanted to look at this. We brought in experts. I think that it would be in our district community's best interest to do this. Give the superintendent, who I have the utmost confidence in, I have so much confidence that he'll put together a group and really reorganize the tech department in such a way that we're moving forward as a district.
And I would also add that this, this is not a plan that we're putting together. This is a plan, as you said, Brian, they would put together and present to us at another time. We're still sort of open about the budget for next year, and this is a big department that costs a considerable amount of money, so it makes sense. Greg, I know you had a question.
Well, I'd make a comment about that. I totally agree with the reorganization type thinking, because it seems like all their concerns have to do with the, you know, planning and structure. And with the new high school coming on the line, we don't want to waste that resource, because there's going to be a lot of functionality there that we just have to, you know, make sure it's being used to the maximum use of the students. So I'm fully in favor of this.
Any other comments or questions? I would say also that, in the conversation I had with the two gentlemen, both have been involved in putting new high schools online and new buildings online. And they had, they had great knowledge, and again, are willing to help and willing to be a part of the next steps if we need them to. So I think that's important. So unless there are any questions, the chair will ask for a vote. Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Jimononi?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And the returning Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it's unanimous. So I'm going to go back to everybody with Brian and Sarah and the two other people, if that's okay, Sean? Sean's very good at following directions, so I really appreciate that. So again, I want to thank, I can't thank you guys enough. I appreciate what you've done for us. And I'm going to make an assumption that we're going to be working together in the future.
Great. So again, we just, we want to say thank you for this opportunity, we really did enjoy it. It was a great experience to get to spend some time with your staff and your teachers. And I do want to close on, again, there are so many great things happening in the Middleborough Public Schools, and the things that teachers are doing with students and using technology are amazing. And again, this is a great stepping up point in terms of planning, and really just being intentional about those things that are happening, and spreading that, you know, conversation in terms of digital learning, in terms of technology, and really being able to move the district to that next level.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Aaron, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And Brian, I'll let you turn it over to continue the second task report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I would just close by saying, we, myself and Sarah, who are here, and obviously administrative team, many administrative team members have tuned in, and we heard you loud and clear in terms of what we need to do. And we will respond to this report accordingly and plan for the future. I don't know, Sarah, have you any closing thoughts on that?
I would just like to echo what you just said, I agree with everything you said.
Okay. And the next item, Sarah, is yours again, is negotiations with vendors, if we have any updates.
Just a quick update. The, I spoke last time about the contract with First Student that we, the Department of Education, had grouped all of the districts that used First Student together as a group to negotiate as one large group. And my personal opinion about that is, the 40 districts put together was just too many people. And the strong, the people that ended up in charge of the negotiations were pretty much saying, "We're not going to pay. My mayor won't let me pay, my town council won't let me pay." And I had had conversation with Superintendent Lynch, and one of the things that we talked about is that Middleborough has a great relationship with the First Student company, that we are happy with the work they do for us, and we value them as a partner. And we're in, going into a year-four option for our contract, but then the following year, so not next spring, but the spring after, we're going to go out to bid for a contract again, and we'd like to preserve the relationship that we have with First Student. So I, through conversations with other school business managers in our local area, found out that other districts were feeling the same way. And so I'm now part of, I don't know how to describe it, other than to say I'm part of a splinter group where we're going to be negotiating separately with First Student in order to compensate them for readiness, so that when we need the buses up and rolling on the day that we need them to pick up students, that they'll be there for us. And I will keep you posted on that as we continue with school committee meetings. The second thing I wanted to say is that another area where there's been a lot of conversation at the state level is with the payments for out-of-district placements. And the Office, OSD, the Operational Services Division, sent out a letter saying that the tuitions to out-of-district placements were non-negotiable, and that if services were being offered, we were to be paying them. And so I think I told you that we would be, I'm working with Carolyn Lyons, and we're collecting up documentation of the services that they're providing, so that we can pay appropriately for those. But there is a letter going out from many different school districts, and joint letters with their superintendent, school committee, town accountant, town managers, going to the state about the actual rates that the out-of-district placements are charging. So the rates get determined by the Operational Services Division, and those rates take into, take in a lot of consideration into things like the electricity that it costs to run their buildings. Well, they're doing remote learning now, just like we're doing remote learning. And so we're looking, different districts are looking to have some sort of adjustment from that. So I have to catch up on all my reading. I did get probably 50 to 60 emails about that today. And I will check in with you about that next time we speak.
Thanks, Sarah. I just want to bring up one point. I know I shared with you and Brian a letter from a member of town that I got, and I shared with the school committee. I just want to be clear, yes, we had a great relationship with First Student, but we know First Student has laid off their bus drivers, but we have no control over that whatsoever, correct, Sarah?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure people understood that, that they are not our bus drivers, even though they're driving buses that say Middleborough. They're employees of First Student, and what First Student does with their employees, we really have no control over at this point.
And the point through you, Mr. Chair, and through you, Mr. Chair, from that individual was that we should be in a position where we're answering, we should answer to that union of those drivers. And we don't, we can't deal with that union of drivers, because that union of drivers is signatory or has a collective bargaining agreement with First Student, and not the Middleborough Public Schools. So we do not want to get involved in that.
Yep, just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Next on my agenda, if we're moving on here, is a food services update. And I just wanted, I know that the chair asks periodically, almost, I think, I believe, on a weekly basis. And I want to bring you up, the community also, up to speed on what we're doing. Beginning on Monday, March 16th, the Food Services Department began serving grab-and-go breakfast and lunch meals out of the Henry B. Berklin School, and it was open to all students and all families in Middleborough. Over the past eight weeks, we've served well over 8,000 meals. Currently averaging well over 200 per day. With the help of the mini-van drivers, we've begun delivering to those children who do not have any transportation. Currently, we're delivering to 24 children in the community. We'll be continuing to serve meals to our students until the end of the school year, at least. You do not, folks at home do not have to sign in to receive meals. We will be at the Berklin School Monday through Friday, between 9:00 and 10:00 on a daily basis, obviously, Monday through Friday. We have also, this Food Services Department has also began refunding lunch money to seniors, high school seniors and other students leaving the district. If any family is in need of a lunch refund, they can send an email to the First Food Services Department, care of Rebecca Bagnell, or call the office, the refund will be in the form of a check and will be sent regularly over the course of the next few weeks. Those are people that might have money in accounts that want that money back prior to beginning the next school year. Or they could find out exactly, they probably know exactly how much they have in their account through communication with the food services. So that's just an update from Food Services. If anybody has any questions on that, I, Mr. Chair, they would go through you.
Anyone have any questions? Currently, I see no one, so we can move on.
Okay, my final item on my agenda tonight is the Student Opportunity Act. And I just wanted to point out that through the 2015 Foundation Budget Review Commission had certain provisions in it that benefit our public schools. They were acted on last year in the Chapter 132 Acts of 2019. And as part of that, what's called Student Opportunity Act, there was a requirement on the part of school districts to submit either a short form or a long form, what's called a Student Opportunity Plan. Again, it's a three-year plan, evidence-based, and it's aimed at closing persistent disparities in achievement among student subgroups. Application guidelines and samples and templates were recommended by the Department of Elementary Secondary Education. They asked for short and succinct plans. The delineation between short forms and long forms was $1.5 million. As I've described earlier at school committee meetings, this massive amount of money through the Student Opportunity Act is going, most, the majority is going to 35 communities. 85% of the money in Massachusetts is going to 35 communities. We happen to be a community that received $90,000 or $30 a student, times 3,000 students. And that is the same extra money in Chapter 70 that we've received for the last four years. So we have not seen a windfall from this. We have not seen a tremendous advantage in planning with Dr. Melanie Gates on this matter with regard to the Student Opportunity Plan, and looking at our greatest need in the district. We decided to put our student plan, our student, put our Student Opportunity Plan together based on our sheltered English, our English learner education program, which, as you know, after John Cardoza, the teacher, left, we had a coordinated program review that came in from the state and made very specific recommendations about how we could do better with that population. So our plan is reflective of that. It is a short, succinct plan, but basically states that we need to expand to two teachers, which we've done, which is in place. Our population has doubled since 2014. 2014, we had about one-half a percent of our population, and at this point, we have about 1% or about 30 students in our population of ELs, or English learners. So this plan is reflective of that expansion of that program, and also the addition of curriculum pieces, which we've budgeted for. And also the addition of curriculum pieces which we've budgeted for and will continue to budget for. So that is that specific subgroup that the Student Opportunity asked us to to target. And we have decided to do that with this group. That plan was was dropped in the in the Dropbox today. I don't expect you to be versed in it. But just to describe to you that that is a plan that we need to submit to the state, be accepted. They, like I said, they've asked for short succinct plans. And with our level, the 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 level one, under one point five million or ninety thousand dollars. This is the plan that we put together. It does require a vote for you. It is in draft form to you. If you'd like to review it further and and move on at the next meeting, that's fine. This is a draft form. It just needs to be finalized through Dr. Gates and myself. But it will basically be what you see before you, just on letterhead and and with some boxes checked. We need to reengage with the subgroup being the parent group, which we meet with on on a regular basis. And we will reengage with them and send them this plan and do a Zoom meeting with them and and get their okay to submit it to the state. So that's where we're at. It's a Student Opportunity Plan based on a subgroup as defined by the Department of Elementary Ed in Chapter one thirty two. And of the the Student Opportunity Act. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for the superintendent? Seeing then, Brian, anything else under superintendent report?
There's nothing. I just, I know that you're going to vote on this later perhaps or or.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to bring everybody else up to sort of run through the rest of the meeting if possible.
Sure.
Something else for superintendent report?
Are you not?
Okay. Rich Oakley, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you very much. Superintendent Lynch, I just wondered if if you could help us understand maybe any any guesses as to why we got. So much less or so much less than we would have hoped from this compared to other communities in the state.
Well, I would say, Mr. Oakley, through you, Mr. Chair, that it's a frustration that I've expressed at a number of meetings. We're a community that was not identified as as somebody that has, we do, we're not, this was based on free and reduced lunch and the numbers and percentages. Most of this money went to larger cities, went to Brockton and Fall River and New Bedford and Worcester. And Lynn, Lawrence and and major cities, Pittsfield and Springfield. And very little money went to most communities. There were some communities around us that received more. Hard to explain why. But. This is the thirty dollars a student that we've been receiving for the last four years, which is added to our Chapter seventy money that comes into us. So it really is. It was not a positive impact on the budget, other than to say that if it were left out, it would be a negative impact. But it is something that for the last, this is our fourth year in a row that we've received the same amount of money. So the Student Opportunity Act did not provide Middleborough with any additional. Financial incentive or financial money. So so we we could not add major programs. We had to feature a program that already existed because we could not afford to add a program.
Rich, I'll also add that. The educational piece was voted on after the budget. And this is part of the reason they didn't add a whole lot of extra dollars to it this year. The hope is those dollars increase as as time increases. But again, that was before everything that happened.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Lynch?
That is it, sir.
Then I'm going to ask Sean to bring up all the school committee members, if that's possible. So the first question I'll throw out to everybody is, do you want to just approve the Student Opportunity Act plan? Greg?
I'm just, I don't see the file. He said it was added to our box.
Anyone else having that same problem?
It's there for me.
What's it called? Is it in the superintendent's report?
On the superintendent's report, it's Draft MPS Student Opportunity Act, short form.
I got it. My, my, everything was condensed, so I couldn't see the right.
No problem. We've all been there.
It's it's a huge document of about three pages.
Three pages. They'll take me three seconds. Okay.
Any other questions about that? Because I'll I'll take a motion while Greg's looking.
I would move that we authorize the superintendent to submit the Student Opportunity Plan for. Twenty twenty one through twenty twenty three, when it's finalized. Since we've received this draft and I don't see it changing much from that.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? I'm hearing none. All those, I got a roll call. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Ms. Givernoni?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I almost made it through a whole meeting with the roll call thing. Thank you, everyone. Next up on the agenda is consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda that has been presented this evening.
Second.
For discussion, just so everyone at home knows, the consent agenda is just our meeting minutes. And the approval warrants, which have already been signed, goes through the, all the school committees to take a look at each. Each meeting. So I'll go through the roll call vote again. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Givernoni?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. To be quite honest with you, for MSBA, we haven't had a meeting and from our last meeting. I believe we have a meeting next week. Am I correct, Brian?
I believe we do have a meeting next week, Mr. Chair. And if people go on to the Middleborough Schools website and they click down to the the webcams. They're going to notice there's been a lot of work done on the project. And if they go further down, they can watch some of the YouTube videos. There's, I think, nine of them right now that that shows all the progress that's being made. It's beautiful to see the the band room. The auditorium is being kind of finished off and insulated at this time. It's just a great project that's moving forward. And the packing lot is ahead of schedule right now. We just, I was talking to Brian Lynch about this a little earlier. So it's a, it's a great thing. This project's moving forward and I'm excited to see. Jeez, maybe the, maybe the seniors can graduate out of it. No, no, just kidding.
Oh, we lost Rich.
Meg, you're in charge.
I think you're in charge, Megan.
Okay. Um, I don't know what he was going to say about that. I would assume it's on hold. Um, so I guess we'll come back to it. Or whenever it gets back in. Oh, there he is.
Are we, we finished, Rich?
I have no idea what happened. So, but that's not bad considering we've only lost Greg and I for a very short portion of the time during this. So that's great. Thanks for finishing, wrapping that up for the MSBA. The superintendent evaluation, yes?
There will be a new video on the MSBA project, the high school project, this Friday. I think I just got a little something from Sean that this Friday, there'll be a new video up.
Fantastic. Next on the agenda was the superintendent evaluation. The superintendent will be sending the packets. He's been a little busy to outline it. So we'll be working on that prior to town election. And then we've covered the action items.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that we approve, appoint Brian Lynch as our appointee to the Reed's Collaborative. On the Board of Directors, our representative, and authorize you to sign the paperwork accordingly.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Any que, any comments or questions? Hearing none. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Ms. Givernoni?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This is a usual thing we do every single year. And so we thank the superintendent for serving there. I should mention there's a donation from Baseite Textiles to Middleborough High School. Does anyone have anything at the end of the meeting? I checked quickly and Sean can, I believe, mention, I didn't see any other comments or questions. We thank those who sent us the comments or questions. We appreciate it. We thank the people who watched live. And so with that, the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session for procedure three. To discuss with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And the chair so declares, I so declare.
Mr. Chair, I move that we enter into executive session only to re-enter public session for the purpose of adjournment.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, this will, yes, please.
Do we have, we don't have a date for the next meeting yet?
No, primarily because we could, you know, we can talk about that. We're allowed to talk about that separately. I've tried to run these meetings when there was information to pass on. So I would assume, I know there'll be a meeting probably end of May, early June. And then we can see where we're going. I I think we'll have to make some determinations. We know the eighteenth, the governor is going to announce or some plans or extend. So we will have to have discussions, for example, about summer programs. What happens given whatever the governor's orders are. And I think more than just what the governor's orders are, we're going to have to understand what the social distancing requirements are. So for example, if we were only allowed to do an event, say, with twenty five or thirty people, then. That limits our opportunities and we're going to have to look at things in different ways. Does that answer your question, Greg?
Yep.
Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Happy Mother's Day, Meg, and every, all the other mothers out there.
Yes, yes. And thank, and I I do want to thank all the administrators who are working extra hard, as are the teachers and as are our staff. They're all doing a fantastic job and we want to thank the parents and the kids for hanging in there. We know it's difficult, but we appreciate everything that you're doing. So with that, Mr. Oakley, to move into executive session?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Ms. Givernoni?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we thank you very much and we look forward to seeing you.